I call the meeting to order for the February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day. Study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
We're now going to current business and the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Kleiman.
I have none.
Councilmember Stapleton. Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wigan?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
None.
Mayor Protem O'Neill? And I have none. Perfect, we'll move right along. Next is a National Mentoring Month presentation by Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Orange County. That's excellent. All right. I'll read the proclamation. And then we'll have Sloan Keane, CEO of Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Orange County, come forward and say a few words. Wonderful. City of Newport Beach proclamation. Whereas the future of Newport Mesa School District, City of Newport Beach, Orange County of Orange, our state and nation rests on the shoulders of our youth. Educated, confident, and nurtured children will give rise to stronger cities, counties, states, and nation. And mentorship is upward social mobility matching a young person with a caring, responsible mentor to build confidence, connection, stability, and to provide guidance, social capital, and direction to set them up for lifetime success. And mentors are an important part of the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Orange County and of the Inland Empire's mentoring program where third-party research has shown that children and youth engaged in the one-to-one professionally-supported mentoring programs of Big Brothers, Big Sisters are more likely to have an increase in school attendance, improve the rate of high school graduation and college attendance, and decrease involvement with drugs, alcohol, and violent behaviors. And January has been designated National Mentoring Month, calling on all our community residents across America to become involved with mentoring. I, Mayor Blom, Mayor of City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim January as Mentoring Month in Orange County, and I urge all citizens of our community to join me in this special assistance. Wonderful. Can we have Sloan Keane come up and say a few words?
I feel like my first time at city council, my back is to somebody. Anyway, thank you for having me here. It's kind of a full-circle moment. I am a product of Newport Beach, a constituent, a Newport Mesa Unified School District graduate, and I live here today. So, and I see a couple friends sitting up there today. So, thank you. It is not January, it is February. So, thank you for allowing me to come today. But one of the biggest reasons that we have really celebrated January Mentorship Month is that for over 65 years, Big Brothers, Big Sisters has been serving Orange County. And in fact, our largest concentration of mentors is right here in Newport Beach. So, don't let anyone tell you that we are not philanthropic. And about five years ago, we took our traditional mentorship program after-school to Newport Mesa. So, right now, after-school, we're at Victoria, Paul Reno, and Sonora High Schools. And what we're doing there is incredibly special. We have high school students from Newport Mesa mentoring elementary school students. So, they're coming once a week facilitated by my staff, and they're helping them with homework. They're helping create relationships. They're helping social and economic mobility growth. And really what we're doing is we're creating a relationship that has been ripped apart post-COVID. So, we are very excited because although we're growing on the Newport Mesa campus, you're going to see more of us next year, and we cannot be more pleased and appreciative of the proclamation. So, thank you very much for the recognition.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We'd like to take a couple of pictures.
Yeah.
Can I invite all councilmembers up there? What a great way to start out Valentine's Day. All right, the next item is discussion about the Ocean Boulevard vision plan.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. We're going to bring back a study session night of an item that was going through for some time. Last year, we had a group of residents from Corona Damar want to talk about maybe doing some work on Ocean Boulevard. This project's been through the PBNR and now coming back to you from, excuse me, specific direction. Jim Houlihan, our Deputy Director, City Engineer, is going to give you a presentation. I know the folks from CDM Ocean Boulevard Group are here tonight to talk to you also. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Blom, city councilmembers. Again, Jim Houlihan, Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer. So, jumping into it, this project, back in June of 2021, was brought forward by Councilmember Brenner as an A1 item. And the request was for the council to direct PBNR to agendize an item for the Bluff Walk presentation that had been presented to council, or it was a short presentation done by the CD RMA. And that item to be presented to the PBNR and for PBNR to come back with a recommendation to city council for action. So, in September, this item was taken to PBNR and the request was to do a field walk, which we had all the members of the commission, as well as staff and some public. We walked from Poppy to Carnation and looked at various locations along the way and got a little history along the way, too. It was very educational. We came back September 22nd. Actually, September 22nd was the walk. December 7th, we came back and PBNR created a three-member ad hoc committee to explore some of the improvement recommendations. There were two ad hoc meetings and the recommendations were prepared and then brought forth on April 5th and unanimously voted to bring forward certain recommendations to the city council. Those recommendations are listed here. The first is to authorize a formation for PBNR to create a three-member ad hoc, new ad hoc committee to guide the concept development of final plans and specs for landscape and park improvements along the Ocean Boulevard from Poppy to Carnation. Second, to allocate $60,000 for the preparation of those plans. Third, for staff to go out and secure the design consultant to work with the public and develop those concepts and the plans, which, again, could be done in phases as we go along. And then lastly, there's a list of recommendations which is provided as Attachment A, which I'm going to run through real quick. So, that was the items that the ad hoc committee came together, put together, and then the PBNR voted on to bring forward to you. Those recommendations, first one, is pretty significant. It's to rename, or come up with a name that would, and I've talked with Sean Levin about how would we go about this. There is a few steps that we would have to go through to rename that whole string of scenic and outlooks, outlook areas, as Ocean Boulevard Bluff Park. That was the first item. The second one, to look at opportunities to widen sidewalks along that stretch from Poppy to Carnation. And there's various locations and ways to look at. There's some properties that have driveways, not a majority of them. Other areas where there's park, where there could be some opportunity. And then other areas where there's some red curb that, there's no parking there, so could there be a little widening in those areas? There are opportunities along the way that we could look at. Third, look at the pedestrian auto safety areas, especially at the access ramp down to the beach. And also look at some areas, right in that area, the slope stabilization and potential for another scenic outlook there. The next one is to monitor and trim and remove hedges that restrict ocean views. And in the next picture, next slide, there's an example of a hedge that was there, created a little tunnel effect, and our city landscape crews went out with coordination with the property owners that lived below there to remove those hedges and put in the turf, adjust the fencing, put in new lower landscaping. It turned out excellent. So, this is the kind of thing that we will continue to do as public works as we see a need and an opportunity. Five, basically have a contiguous plant pallet throughout that stretch in the public right-of-way area along the trail. Number six, again, a more significant item, is PBNR to have an opportunity to review new encroachment permits for any new development on Ocean Boulevard. That isn't happening today. Those would directly go to the Planning Commission, but to give them an opportunity to at least provide recommendations to the Planning Commission. So, that's one of the things that was on their list to be presented to you today. Seven, look at all the different locations along the way, the scenic outlooks, Little Corona, Inspiration Point, Larkspur, Iris, Lookout Point, Dahlia, which we just recently, in the last year or so, completed a lookout there, and then Carnation, which also was completed recently. It's a very small, little point that was created. Along the way there, we continue to look at environmental items, specifically the bluff erosion and the storm runoff areas, looking for opportunities for water quality. And then lastly, to look at updating the signage and to identify the scenic points. We've done a pretty good job. There are a couple locations that, like Iris and Larkspur, that aren't specifically named, but there could be opportunities along the way and also to help visitors to direct them to the beach access locations. So, with that, again, here are the recommendations that were presented from PBNR. And this is one item that just occurred today, and it's not in your packet. This sign in the very bottom-left corner, that's, it was a pretty washed-out sign, and it was repainted and refurbished to what it looks like today on the upper right-hand corner. And so, that's, again, an effort we continue to do out there as public works. And with that, if there's any questions?
Perfect. Thanks. Let's bring it back up here. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you. I first just want to take this opportunity to thank Ron. This is really his vision and something that has been his project for quite some time. So, even getting it to this point has been a lot of effort on his part and also staff. I know, I know there's been a lot done to date already to really refresh this area, as you mentioned, you know, just cleaning up some of the view corridors and things like that. I just had a couple of quick questions. The first one being, do we know generally kind of what percentage of homeowners there we already have encroachment agreements with?
Yeah. Yeah, so there is currently, along the way, there's 47 properties that are adjacent to the south side of the roadway. 27 of those, so about 57% have encroachment agreements.
Okay, great.
And I do have a pocket slide if you want to see those.
Might be good to know. If you don't are aware, Ocean Boulevard, the paved portions are street, but there's another 50 feet of Ocean Boulevard towards the ocean. That's what the councilmembers are referring to. The encroachment permits are the use of that public property up to the houses right-of-way.
Yeah, this one right here shows that from Lookout Point East along Ocean Boulevard, the ones in green have encroachment agreements. So, of those, there's 21 out of 37. And then this is the other portion where there's 10 properties and six of them have encroachment agreements.
Great. Thank you for that information. My other question is about just traffic and pedestrian safety in general in the area. What do we see generally? You know, how many incidents or calls for service to that area are we logging?
I have not received that data, but I know that's something we can dig into. I know that generally that area, people are, especially in busy summer days, the speeds are relatively low, which is good because it's, but it's crowded, that's why. But it's those interfaces where there's crossings, that's, again, we want to look at those for any opportunities we can enhance. So, we can, we'll dig into that a little bit more, especially at that ramp and the other ramp at China Cove, those down there.
I just referenced, out of my 15 years here, I maybe remember one. It's not really a place that has a lot of conflicts because as Mr. Houlihan, it's really slow-speed motions. I'm sure there are cases where people are being bumped and bikes are hitting cars and things, but it's not like we're having hit-and-runs and things like that just because it's really slow speed and a lot of people there.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else from up here? Okay. I should have a couple. Oh. No? Do you want to take the button, Rob?
Councilmember Kleiman. I just wanted to mention that I am very pleased to see that there is a specific opportunity to conduct public workshops because I do think it's very important. There are a lot of considerations of the homeowners there, and so I'm glad to see that that's something that's going to be included in the, you know, very initial process so that we get ahead of anything that we, you know, can get ahead of and really understand the concerns of the community as a whole, Corona Damar as a whole. So, thank you for including that.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neill?
Yeah, I think it's worth moving forward because I agree with Councilmember Grant. There's a lot of, there's a lot of room to kind of work through with residents on some of the touchpoints, some of the major points. But one of the things, so, Ron, I went for a great walk with Ron. I had to keep up. It was hard. But a couple things, kind of more in the short term. So, you have those slides at the back?
Yeah. I, you were gone.
I apologize.
When I showed this picture.
You showed it. Yeah. How much better looking is the sign, Ron? Yeah, see? Anyway, this is, these are kind of like, there are going to be some short-term things that I think we can really step up. So, one of the things I noticed on our, when we were walking, there are some of the, I know we need to figure out what to do with the railroad ties. There are some areas that look a little deteriorated and we might be able to at least kind of shore those up. But one of the things I noticed is the caps on the fencing, so the fencing that we see in the back of that picture right there, some of those caps have rusted through and some of them are just straight up falling apart. So, in the short term, since I don't think a lot of those, that fencing is going to be required to, I doubt we're going to be replacing a lot of that. I think we should, it would be really good to just do a maintenance walk on those. I was surprised, frankly. I just hadn't noticed it, but I was surprised at how much deterioration, the salt, I know it's saltwater, but we got a, we got, some of that just looks pretty bad. I've got a couple pictures on my phone, but I won't, I won't add them in. So, I would, I would kind of look at this project as kind of like a short, medium, long term. In the short term, there's, we have some maintenance that badly needs it. So, I'd like, I'd just request a, someone from Public Works, just do a walk, take pictures. Let's kind of inventory the worst and fix that. On the medium side, I'm sure that there's going to be a lot that we can do, including building up a lot of the grassy area. And then on the long term, I suspect we're going to be talking about some of the entrance choke points that, you know, when we're talking Crystal, China Cove and the area down to Big Corona, that'll take a little bit of extra work, for sure. And then extending out a little bit, I'm sure that's, but, but I think that, I think that this can be, I think we can move forward pretty quick and make it look pretty nice in the, in the short term, very nice in the medium, and then awesome in the long term. So, there you go.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant?
Just one last thing to add. It's a fun but little-known fact that Inspiration Point is the site of the first landscape art installation in the City of Newport Beach. So, while it has a lot of beautiful significance, it's also of historical significance. And we have a former councilmember and historical guru in town with a similar name of Don Webb. He has a wealth of knowledge about what happened at Inspiration Point with some very highly-regarded landscape architects in, I think, the 70s. And I think it would be worthwhile to investigate what happened there. We've lost a lot of that original installation, but some of it still remains, and if some of it can be reinvented, that would be wonderful as well. So, I'll bring that to your attention. It's, like I said, something that a lot of people don't know about, but it's worth looking into.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of quick thoughts on when we're working through this. I love the idea. I think it's great to rehab any pieces of open space that we have. I just want to make sure that as we're looking kind of forward, we're designing in a way that leaves it to the benefit of visitors and residents and not permanent visitors and creates kind of an ambiance that, you know, we were, we're thinking very forward in our design of these ideas and making it very difficult, maybe, you know, to pitch a tent and put those pieces in play, especially with some of the walkways and kind of what we're looking for. Because I, I want to constantly see improvements go throughout the city in these pieces, but I, I really want to caution us that design is a huge element that we have to inhibit some of those permanent inhabitants that have become, you know, an issue. And I, it's, I want to keep improving, but I want to make sure we're focusing on those pieces as well. So, thank you. Do you need any direction from us at this point, or?
Just to verify, then you're okay with the $60,000. What we'll do is we'll put that in the budget. You'll see it in the early look as another item.
Great. So, let's, let's head out to, I'm sorry.
Is that going to, is that going to go into CIP?
It'd be part of the landscape enhancement. So, we'd, we're planning funds already to put into landscape enhancement as a, it's a program we have every year, so this would be added to it.
So, one of the things Grace and I were talking about yesterday was, I couldn't remember how this played out. So, we used to have this in our CIP at a much larger figure, and then we would re-budget it a year or two, and then when we realized it wasn't going to happen in the short term, we took it out of the CIP. Are we going to be trying to put this back into the CIP? How's this going to play?
I don't recall having a landscape project for Ocean Boulevard. We did have pavement, if you recall, we were doing, and one of those we took out. It's down by Carnation. We haven't done that portion yet. So, as we probably come out with this plan, if we have concrete improvements, trails, curbs, and things, we might combine it all. But what we'll do is we'll go ahead and put $60,000 in the CIP, and it'll be ready for, basically, once the CIP's approved by you folks, and then they can start their process. I mean, on hiring a consultant at that point. We can go ahead and start the RFP process and get the, if that's where you'd like to go, get that motion going.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out how to make sure we're budgeting for it into the future properly. So, it sounds like what we really need to do is get the scope done, and then once we get the scope done, the bigger project makes its way, like the pavement side of things and whatnot. If it gets bigger, then that, then that scope of the project gets bigger in the CIP. I just want to make sure it's, like I said, I want to make sure it's budgeted for, but until, I guess until we have that full scope, and that's sort of the point of this process is.
Exactly.
I think we're, I guess what they're recommending, they want to hire the consultant. It's going to take, what do you think, six months or so to go through the process, get the permits, and then it'll come up as our other projects will come up with a cost assessment. Again, depending on what, if the outcome is and how much you want to do, if we're going to do a lot of walks, a little walks, and then we'll have a number, and then we can appropriate that number into the CIP or, at the time, an award of a project, you could put the money into the budget.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
Let's jump back to the public. We'll now hear public comments on this. Hey, Debbie.
Mayor Blom, members of the city council, I'm Debbie Stevens, president of the Corona Damar Residents Association. Very happy to be here to speak on this topic. Before that, it became A1A here, A1A, whatever that is. It was actually part, brought to our association and the whole idea, a lot of different ideas and all that kind of good stuff. And we said, let's check in with our members and the people that live down there first to see, you know, what types of issues were they most concerned about, what could they support, and all that kind of good stuff. So, we did start off this actually even longer than, than it's been in front of you people as well. And so, with that, they came back and said, please protect all the parking that you can protect. And that was one of the big messages that came back. Having said that, we know that we still need to do a lot more outreach. I want to thank PBNR because I love the suggestions that they've brought forward and they've refined a lot of the ideas and all that. I do appreciate all of you that went out and did the walk. I think when you go out there with Ron, you see, it's much easier to see what needs to be done and really appreciate the effort there. We have to announce, at the request of Dave, we also sent out an email to our residents. About 700 residents were notified. Of those, we got 72% to open the email, which is always a good thing, and about 100 of them went and actually opened the survey or the staff presentation today. So, we're getting the word out there. I don't think we have too much negative going on. We know that that still needs to be worked on. And we have 18 members that are actually residents along Ocean Boulevard. So, we'd like to still continue to work on getting the word out and getting input from those people as well, all of this. It's important to protect that which is public, but also that which is private. So, thank you, appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. Since this is a study session that the staff touched on and you asked some questions about the encroachments, and I think that opens a larger question about the encroachment policy in Newport Beach and whether it needs some further study, not only on Ocean Boulevard, but throughout the city. By way of background, the reference is to a city council policy, Policy L6, Encroachments in Public Right-of-Way. And for those of you who have not been following the council too long, it was not very many years ago that each encroachment request actually came here to the city council for approval. But a few years ago, we had a semi-comprehensive revision of the city council policies, and all of those that began with an L were referred to the Planning Commission to refer and come back to recommendations. And naturally, the Planning Commission suggested that they would have the competency to review those requests and approve them in place of the council with the right to appeal to you. But there is a problem with that because perhaps the Planning Commission did not look as far as they might into the background of that issue. And if they looked at our city charter, it says in Section 709A, under the powers and responsibilities of the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, that their first power and duty is to advise you, the city council, on all matters pertaining to parks, beaches, recreation, parkways, and street trees. And I would point out that most of the encroachments into a public right-of-way, if they were not being encroached into, would be used as parkways, as we're wanting more parkway for the public on Ocean Boulevard. And so, it would seem that policy needs to be relooked at since PBNR should have some input on how these encroachments are being approved and allowed when they could be parkway, and that is specifically PBNR's responsibility to advise you on that. So, I think that's something that needs further study, not just on Ocean Boulevard, but citywide. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any other speakers?
Ron Yeo, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for moving this ahead, and it's appropriate that it's on Valentine's Day because we-
responsibilities of the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, that their first power and duty is to advise you, the city council, on all matters pertaining to parks, beaches, recreation parkways, and street trees. And I would point out that most of the encroachments into a public right-of-way, if they were not being encroached into, would be used as parkways, as we're wanting more parkway for the public on Ocean Boulevard. And so it would seem that policy needs to be re-looked at, since PBNR should have some input on how these encroachments are being approved and allowed when they could be parkway. And that is specifically PBNR's responsibility to advise you on that. So I think that's something that needs further study, not just on Ocean Boulevard, but citywide. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any other speakers?
Ron Yo, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for moving this ahead. And it's appropriate that it's on Valentine's Day because we love this place.
Wonderful. Any other speaker?
Hi, I'm, I'm Steve Crow. I live on Ocean Boulevard, 3116 Ocean. It's right on the other side of the street from the grass strip above the, above the big beach. And I just wanted to find out if that hairpin turn going down to the beach that goes down the big ramp to the parking lot, is that going to be a part of this study? Because we're right next to it and we see the amount of idiots that are trying to, trying to go southbound and trying to do a U-turn. They can't ever make it and it's a big mess. And it seems like that should be included. Is that? No? Or would that be a different venue?
So this is a great time for comments. We'll address any questions at the end of your, your comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you guys want to jump in there?
Yeah, so that specifically was one of the items that we're looking at, that intersection.
The, the public safety piece of it.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Any other comments?
Good afternoon, Mayor Blom, esteemed council members. My name's Kira Kirby. I'm on the PBNR commission and was a part of this ad hoc commission, committee. And I appreciate what you've all had to share and the questions that you've had, because we had a lot of questions too. But we were very thoughtful and intentional and really were focused on preserving this gem that is a part of our city and wanting to make sure that the, the region, the area, the whole stretch was also as safe as possible because there, as some of you know, you've walked it, there are numerous places where the sidewalk's very narrow. And there's other odd things that stick out. And it's a crowded area even when it's not the summertime. Lots of people, lots of locals like to be out there and enjoy the beauty, beauty of our city, the sunsets, the picnics, all the things. And as we all know, it's hard to pass a stroller without going into the street. And then there's cars parked there. So I think one of the goals that we had also was to just see how we could enhance this area to better serve our community. So I thank you for your support of this and we look forward to what the future holds.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
City Council, my name is Karen Carlson and I am a longtime resident of Corona Del Mar. And I was heartened by Councilman Grant's comment that there will be workshops of some sort for people to have an opportunity to see what exactly on the minutia, including widening sidewalks or in specific areas. And I'd like to just get a little knowledge of the heads up. How will we be notified that these are going to occur so that we can attend? It's a place I walk every single day, usually twice. And there, how far-reaching is it? Because the stairs down from Lookout Point, over the weekend, there were some of Councilman O'Neill's people, or Councilman Blum's people he was referring to in the area that is over Pirate's Cove and how the landscaping and that could be definitely improved. So anyway, if we could have some kind of a, a printout or a general notification that doesn't just slide by so that those of us who are very interested in this can take an opportunity to chime in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good afternoon, welcome to the new council members. My name is Laura Curran, I live in Corona Del Mar. I want to thank everyone who's done work on this. Would also ask that we consider using a native plant palette that's consistent with our local habitat and with many of our other installations as we look at updating the landscaping in this area. We have great examples out here at Civic Center Park and in 25 or so other locations in city parks. So if anybody'd like to take a tour, I'd be happy to show you. Or Sean in Public Works or Park Summer can do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Wonderful. And to answer your question, I'm sure we'll post any kind of meetings on our city website as well as Debbie will be well-versed in anything with CDMRA as far as any of the public meetings come out. Let's, let's bring it back up here. Do we have any other comments from the dais? Great. Direction from us on the $60,000? I think a quick straw vote on that? We all in favor of? Great.
Unanimous, 7-0.
Wonderful. Let's move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. I think they're all leaving, Jim. I think this is your time. Wow. All right, well, that's beautiful. Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announce? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Laura. She snuck up on me.
Are you taking agenda items first or non-agenda items?
No, this isn't, well, this is agenda and non-agenda items.
Okay, so, good afternoon, my name is Laura Curran, I live in Corona Del Mar. I'd like to comment and welcome the new council members and really talk about, this is your opportunity to take an active role in Corona Del Mar and Newport Beach to help end the imposition of ineffective drug rehabs in our neighborhood and to end the impact on our neighborhoods, but also the poor treatment that our residents and people coming for treatment provide. So I've heard comments that the council members only hear about this topic from a few people. But I would encourage you to go back, for the new council members, and look at years and years of testimony, years of personal conversations with Eric Wigan when he was on Patricia Bates's office, and really find out how much effort the residents have put into this topic over the years. And one of the reasons it's of interest to the whole community that we are known as a community that pays attention to the quality of the rehabs in the neighborhood and that we advocate vigorously when Department of Healthcare, with the Department of Healthcare Services and the Department of Social Services, when rehabs are not operating effectively. For example, we had a situation in Corona Del Mar where a rehab in the Flower Streets is, has a person, a manager operating as the owner, but the license has not been transferred. We wrote a letter, the, in October of 2021, to DHCS asking for more information about the license. There was no response. And according to public record, there's been no follow-through. So as a resident, one of the things council members, we would say council members can do is continue to assert vigorously with the HCS on these issues that are not clear. And we can, can hire the lobbyist that was promised to us in 2021 to advocate on our behalf continually in Sacramento. Second, when residents call and ask for help with code enforcement issues, it shouldn't take four months. There's an issue currently in our neighborhood where we've been working for four months to end a noise problem. And we get told, well, we've issued notices of violation. We've issued a notice of violation. That process can take months. And in the meantime, we're dealing with the situation. So code enforcement needs to be more assertive in reaching out directly with the staff, with the rehab operators, and contacting DHCS and asking them to get engaged. Finally, we would ask you to look at conducting an audit, requesting a state audit of the operations of DHCS and DSS and determining where cases of insurance fraud are happening and what follow-through there is regarding the efficacy of treatment. We've had a person who was killed in Newport Beach who was in a treatment facility. We've had treatment facilities in my neighborhood which are shown to have lack of supervision, improper records, overcrowding, offering treatment to people who are not members of the rehab. And DHCS just says, well, we'll let them try again. We should be asserting vigorously that that's not appropriate. And we should be asking the state to audit the effectiveness of these rehab facilities. So we welcome you as part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Seeing none, Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the city's labor negotiators regarding negotiations with all represented and unrepresented employees, except for the council appointees, all as set forth on the agenda under item 4A1 and 2. Thank you.
Perfect. We are recessed until 5:30? All right, 5:30, fine. 5:30 sounds great. We'll see you guys all on the side.
Thank you.
I called the meeting to order for the February 14th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no closed session announcement this evening.
Wonderful. Now it's time for the invocation. Chaplain Kathy Gilbert of Calvary Chapel of Costa Mesa.
Will you join me in prayer? Lord God, we thank you on this Valentine's Day. We acknowledge your love for us. We thank you, Lord, that you are here in our presence with us. We thank you that you delight in hearing our prayers and answering our prayers. We thank you that your word declares that we are to pray and to give thanks for those that are in authority over us. And that is what we do, because you promise that when we do, that we will experience the peaceable and quiet presence and work of your Holy Spirit in our lives, bringing about godliness and holiness. So specifically, we ask for our city council, Lord. We lift up the mayor and the mayor pro tem. We lift up the city council members, the city manager and the attorney, the city develop, the community development and finance directors. We lift up the public works department and the overseers. We lift up the police chief, the fire chief, and then the police and fire departments, thanking you for each one of these individuals, Lord. Praying for the peaceful and quiet lives you promised. And Lord, we want to specifically ask for wisdom and discernment for the, some of the issues that are going to be before the council today. We just named the, the wisdom and counsel needed for the nominees that are to go in each vacant seat, Lord. We lift up the commercial residential land use consideration, the approval of the sculpture installation we lift to you, the underground utility contract approval we lift to you. And we thank you for all these issues as well as the many others that are before the council. And we thank you, Lord, that, and we ask that you will bless and meet the needs of the wonderful citizens in this wonderful city of ours, Lord. We pray for your protection and your blessing on our children. We pray specific help for the need for the area of homelessness and loneliness, Lord. And we thank you, because it's Valentine's Day, not only do you love us, but we ask for your love to be in us so that we can love our neighbors as ourselves. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen?
Thank you. You'll now join me in the pledge of allegiance to our beautiful country. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, members of the public.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Wonderful. Now it's time for council announcements or reports from council members on committee activities. And time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on the future agenda. Councilmember Kleinman, do you have any announcements?
I'll just note that I attended Officer Nicholas Vela's Memorial Highway sign dedication along with many of our other council members and first responders, and that we hope the community will join us in honoring him at Marina Park on February 19th at 10:00 a.m. We will not forget Nick or the sacrifice he made in the line of duty.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I don't know if it's because we had an extra week off on council, but I have a decent report. I was able to go to the utilities department. We did a tour with Councilwoman Grant to see where the water comes in. It was a terrific tour and I thank Mark for putting that together. It was a lot of fun. I learned a lot. I had a harbor tour with the Harbor Master Blank and Councilwoman Kleinman. So enjoyed getting out on the harbor and seeing all the projects and all the wonderful things that Harbor Master is doing. And there's no one better to serve in that role than Mr. Paul Blank. So thank you for what you're doing. I also attended the Officer Nicholas Vela memorial and will look forward to being there next week at Marina Park as well. Or is it this weekend? Yeah, okay, I'll be there. I also went to Sherman Gardens to do some community outreach when they're talking about what they're doing as far as the improvement. It was great to see a lot of community support. And it was fun to see what they're looking to accomplish there. And I would encourage my fellow council members to go if you haven't seen what they're looking to do. I also attended with Mayor Pro Tem. I'll let him give a better report, but Mayor Pro Tem, while O'Neill and I joined the Robbins family and the Ford dealership in Costa Mesa, they celebrated, celebrated their 100th year anniversary. And I went because it started in District 1 on the peninsula. It's hard to believe there was a Ford dealership down there 100 years ago, but they're continuing strong. So also went to the GDRF one-night fundraiser to begin the wine auction gala. It was really well-attended. And I just want to thank Councilwoman Grant and I also served together on Speak Up Newport. But I want to thank the Board of Speak Up Newport, especially former Mayor Ed Selich for the Mayor's Dinner that we were all able to host or attend last week. I thought Mayor Blom did a great job giving a state of the city and it was fun to see everyone there that night. One of my favorite events of the year, no question. Also did a tour with Babo Village, walking tour with Kelly Carlson and Colleen DeLucio. Had a great time looking at my district and a project that I'm very passionate about and all that we can do to continue to improve that area in the village. I went to the Celebration of Life for former Harbor Commissioner Doug West on Saturday. I've served with Doug on the Harbor Commission for four years and we're all better because of his service to our community and he will be greatly missed. Former Commodore at Babo Yacht Club as well. So, and I just want to say to Gary Crisp with Chris Imaging, he hosted 500 Marines at the American Legion for the Super Bowl. And I saw a lot of photos and it was just an incredible opportunity for him to celebrate those that protect us here, that allow us to have freedom. So good for Gary Crisp and Chris Imaging for doing that again this year. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. And I guess as we get further down here and we repeat the same kind of things, ditto. But I did attend Officer Vela's memorial and look forward to the public coming in Newport Beach to attend a similar memorial here in Newport Beach as they had in Huntington Beach. I was able to tour the Costa Mesa Bridge Shelter, which was a very valuable experience to understand the partnership that we have with the city of Costa Mesa. And I was joined by our city manager, Grace Wong, and several members of the council in Costa Mesa, including their mayor, John Stevens. And again, it was a very important opportunity to understand how we're using those monies that we are investing in the homeless shelter to better our community. I was also able to work out at the back, in the Back Bay at the Big Canyon cleanup that was going, is going on constantly out there with the Newport Bay Conservancy. That's something that anybody in the public can do. Just go on their website. They're doing amazing work out there. They have a lot of community grants that they receive. And that money is well-used to make sure that our environment, especially our water environment and our flora and fauna is adequately taken care of and protected. So I encourage anybody highly to look at that website and join in on their efforts. And then, of course, I participated in the Mayor's Dinner. Councilmember Stapleton and I, as well as former council member Tony Petros and former Mayor Ed Selich co-chaired that event. And it was absolutely a night to celebrate in Newport Beach, especially as we celebrated our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wigan.
I better start going to more meetings or I'm going to look like a fool up here. At the city selection committee, they have a meeting kind of on and off throughout the year, but all 34 of Orange County's mayors attend, including our mayor. And I was unanimously, unanimously selected to serve as the coastal cities representative for the OC Parks Commission. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your support and for the other 33 mayors in the county to serve. There's five representatives that are chosen by the Board of Supervisors, one inland cities representative and one coastal cities representative. So I look forward to... So I look forward to serving that. We meet on one Thursday every month at the headquarters for OC Parks in the city of Irvine. Councilmember Kleinman did tour. She missed, but we did tour the utilities department. We had an extensive hour-long tour. Mark, thank you for your time out there, and we learned a lot, and it was very informative. Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill and I attended the memorial service for Tony Shaw on Saturday. It was spectacular, the amount of people that came out to somebody who loved Newport Beach as much as Tony did, and to see the community there rally together for his wife and family. It was, it was a good feeling that Newport Beach has such lovers of the community, but such good folks like Tony. So that was a touching tribute. And lastly, I'm going to be cheesy here, but I'm going to thank my wife for letting me be here on Valentine's Day. It's my other love of the city is the city of Newport Beach, so she gets to share Newport with all of us. Sorry for the cheese ball, but had to throw it out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
Yeah, I also attended Harbor Commissioner Doug West's service at Baboa Yacht Club with Joe, and I think a couple other Harbor Commissioners were there from his time on the commission. And I regarded him as a very good friend and a very kind person. He was way up in the auto industry as a counsel for a number of firms, and you would never know it. He just is a humble guy and always kind and really cared about his work on the Harbor Commission. So it was an honor. And I'll say Baboa Yacht Club did a, the Commodores and the organization of Baboa Yacht Club did a really nice job of honoring him as a former Commodore of the yacht club. I also attended my friend Steve Smith's 104th birthday at the house he's built and has lived in for 73 years. And I first met Steve when someone in the Heights area said, Brad, you've got to go to this guy's 100th birthday party. And I was not impressed, and I just, geez, I thought it'd be sort of a dull affair, you know? And I parked about two blocks away from the place because you couldn't get closer, and there was the clinking of glasses and lots of music and people having a great time when I walked in. And it was hosted by Judy Elmore. She's in the car business also. And it was just a great party. And Steve, at 100 years old, was sharp as a tack. And after that party, I said, I got to get to know Steve because he just was so, so alive at 100 years old. So a little history about Steve real quick. He came to this town from the Hollywood area with his parents in the 30s, and his father and his brother ran a boatyard where the Fun Zone is now. I had no idea there was a boatyard there. And he was a kid on Baboa Island at the dining, at his folks dining room table, and I think the year was 1933 when the earthquake hit the island and, of course, the whole area. And it sent everybody fleeing off the island, across the bridge, and up onto the bluff for the night because they were all afraid of seismic wave coming in. And he just remembered it vividly, and he's such a good storyteller. And he also spent his career here in Newport, basically in real estate. He oversaw the construction of the Newport Baboa Savings and Loan Building, which is now the SAP Building. For those of you that remember it, it's built in 1962, and it was a modern building then, and it's still a modern building now after Hassel Plotner put the money in to completely restore that building, which is just great. And he also built this six-story, I think it is, building next door where Blackman Jewelers is on the bottom. And that building has been completely restored by a private party as well. And it's a testament to the building's design and Steve's effort, so he was really involved with that. And he also worked for the Irvine Company, and what he did for the Irvine Company has changed people's lives, although they didn't know it at the time. But so many people in town were leasing from the Irvine Company, and particularly people on Cliff Drive and in Kings Road. And his job was to help transform those leases into fee simple properties and negotiate with the owners of each parcel. And a friend of mine bought his parcel on Cliff Drive with a beautiful, beautiful view of the ocean in 1955 for about $52,000. And, you know, so, and he didn't think it was a big deal then, but he certainly does now. So Steve's, a couple questions, a couple things about Steve. I asked him what he does to keep busy, and he says he, he told me he read, and he read between 12 and 16 books a month. And he's got a special chair and light to read with. And when he was in his late 90s, he would take his electric tricycle and take it from Newport Heights all the way to the Cronal Mar Branch Library and load it up, bring him the books he'd read, and then load it up and bring the books back that he was going to read. And so he was very curious, still is very curious. And I was, I missed him for about a year and a half during COVID, and he actually got COVID and survived it. And now, last week, at 104, he is still a joyous, very attentive, with-it guy, and obviously a superager, if there ever was one. And it makes me wonder, there must be, we know we've got other superagers in town, but he's just an incredible example. And I thought about it in my time with him. He never said a negative word about anything, politics, whatever it is. And we would, I would drive him around in my truck, and he would talk about different areas in Newport and what it was like back in the day. But he was just easy to, easy to laugh, and he just enjoyed life. And I think that's the real secret to a good life and a long life. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill?
That was awesome. Since I, other council members mentioned where I was, I will just simply say we have a finance committee meeting this coming Thursday from 3 to 5. Well, at least starting at 3:00 p.m. Hopefully not going until 5:00, but we'll see. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we covered a beautiful mount up here. There's a lot of those things, and we'll continue to beat a lot of them. And I, thanks, thanks, Councilmember Avery. That was, that was great. I really enjoyed that. And it is Valentine's Day, so we're looking forward to this wonderful agenda we have and brief speaking moments for some of our presenters today. We love you all. It's such a great meeting. Perfect. Let's move on. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, will you read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar?
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Perfect. Councilmember Kleinman, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through 13?
No.
Councilmember Stapleton?
I have none.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wigan?
I do not.
Councilmember Avery?
None.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill?
None.
And I have none.
All right. So we have amended minutes that are in your packets for members of public. It's at the door. So I'll move the approval of the consent calendar with those amended minutes.
Wonderful. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wigan. Wonderful. Oh, we'll now have a moment for public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 13.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. At these meetings, the public frequently hears references to Council Policy A1, and on your consent calendar this evening, item number 5 is a proposed revision to that tiny piece of the much bigger Policy A1 that has to do with how council members can put items on a future agenda. I don't know what you do when you review these things on the consent calendar to know what you're voting on, but I want to make sure that if you were in a hurry and looked just at the red line to see what was being changed, what you read there is not the same as is in the resolution that apparently is what you are being asked to approve. The two have different language, completely different language. So I hope you know which of the two you are voting to approve on the consent calendar. And second, whichever version it is, I assume it's the one in the resolution, I myself do not totally understand its intent. And if it is to restrict what a council member can ask to be put on the agenda to be less than anything that is within the jurisdiction of the council, I would think that that's a restriction you would not be wanting to put on yourself. So I'm wondering why it just says that the matter should not be things, your requests should be limited to items within the jurisdiction of the city council. So that, that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 13? Perfect. We'll bring it back up here. Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill?
That's a good catch. He's right. The red line version's wrong, but the resolution version is right. So just FYI to anybody, I'm not sure what happened there.
Wonder, do we have any other additional comments up here? Perfect. Seeing none? Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 3 and 4. Ordinance 2023-1, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment CA 2022-5 to change the development limit specified for Bay Island from 23 dwelling units to 25 maximum dwelling units. And ordinance 2023-2 amending section 20.48.200 accessory dwelling units of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to implement council policy K4, reducing the barriers to the creation of housing and new state law requirements related to accessory dwelling units. Councilmember Grant? Was that a thumbs up? It's already showing. So motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Perfect. Now we have public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items? I'm not looking at you, Jim, in particular, just perfect. Wonderful. Let's move on. We're going to go on to the public hearing item now. Item number 14 is an ordinance numbered 2023-3. The resolution numbers 2023-11 and 2023-12. A general plan amendment to change the land use designation of 3014 Baboa Boulevard from commercial to residential. I think we'll take a quick staff report on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Blom. City Councilmember Simone Jurdis, your community development director. And with me is David Lee, Senior Planner. So this item is a general plan amendment for the property, a commercial property, which is home to Sancho's Tacos, you could see there at the bottom. And what the applicant is requesting is to change the general plan and the zoning to allow for residential use. And so that parcel alone is, butts up against to, butts up against to R2 zoning anyway. So it's right adjacent. We feel it is appropriate. The item did go to the planning commission, and they did recommend approval. This is the dwelling unit. So it's just a general plan amendment. What you're approving today is just the legislative act. So if you were to approve it tonight, the item goes to, we have to amend our local coastal plans, so it goes to the Coastal Commission for their consent, for their review. If they approve it, it'll come back to the city council, and then we're done with this legislative act. The applicant still has to file for a separate coastal development permit, and that coastal development permit, we'll be able to condition it because it is residential, it butts up against commercial. We want to make sure that the occupants of the new dwelling, the two dwelling units, know that there is commercial property there, so in case there is any noise issues or any noise concerns. And that is the brief presentation we have for this item.
Beautiful. Bring it back up here. Councilmember Stapleton?
The sidewalk in front of there, we talked about relocating. Is that going to be at the cost of the owner or the city?
That's correct. It is the applicant's responsibility. I think we do have a very brief slide just so you could visualize that. Okay. So there, the bottom is the current situation, and the top is the proposed, the applicant will have to pay for that.
Yeah, my only concern is that this is an intense commercial zone.
Right.
I'm crazy who would think would live there, but yeah, that's my comment.
Any other comments up here? I will make one quick comment on that, in that I did raise that same concern with community development, that I, you know, we'd like to see some disclosures if this moves forward in the coastal plan, to exactly what you just said, Mrs. Stapleton, that any resident that moves in is fully aware that this is a commercial zone. I also spoke with the operator of the plaza itself and kind of asked them their thoughts, and they thought this would be a much better use of the property as there's a lot of encroaching and parking, and they're not necessarily the best operators. So I was feeling positive about this plan. So let's roll out to the public real quick, seeing no more comments up here. Public comments on item 14?
Hi. Hi, my name is Mary Hyatt. I live on 31st Street. I've been there 45 years, and I'm concerned about the safety of the new location that you're talking about for the crosswalk. It's closer to the intersection of 32nd and Baboa. When you are turning left from 32nd onto Baboa Boulevard, already it's a pretty tight area where they have to stop for the pedestrians in the existing crosswalk. If you're going to move it closer to the signal, in the summer, the traffic turning left onto South Baboa Boulevard is going to back up into the intersection. And that's already, I mean, has whoever's done the traffic report, which I would like to have a copy of, whoever did the traffic report, did they actually physically go to the intersection and look at the way the traffic moves it there? Because already, the, there's a parking lot for Vons, and when you come out of the parking lot, the driveway to go out of it is immediately to the left of the new proposed crosswalk, which means people will be turning, the vehicles will be turning right into the crosswalk. So I would hope that somebody actually physically looks at the way the pedestrians go. And my, my thought is maybe because jaywalking is not a problem anymore, nobody cares where the crosswalk is, because the crosswalk is going to be very close to the signal, which has crosswalks, but nobody walks down there to use the signal crosswalks. They use the crosswalk that runs directly into Sancho's Tacos. But they will still use that because there's no penalty for jaywalking. So that's just my point. But I would like to see the traffic report. Where would I go to get one of those?
They won't answer any questions right now, but I'll make sure staff gets with you, and we can find, find that information for you. Thank you so much. Perfect.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. As to details, and I do think details sometimes matter, you have two resolutions before you. Both of them have an Exhibit A attached to them, which claims to be the legal description of the property whose general plan designation you are seeking to change. I spent a little time this afternoon trying to picture the property based on this legal description. I could not make heads or tails of it, and I finally came to the conclusion, the reason I could not is this is not the legal description of the property, it's actually the preamble to it, and it was supposed to end by saying, described as follows, colon, and the actual legal description of the property would fill most of the rest of this page. So you may want to have the staff correct the two resolutions so they actually have the legal description of the property before these get signed by the mayor. Another comment that I would want to make, I've noticed increasingly the agenda packets, at least that the public sees, are getting thinner and thinner. In this one, there are two items, the Planning Commission Staff Report Attachment D and the Planning Commission Resolution Attachment F. It says that they were not included because of their bulk. There may be reasons for not including them. They provide a link to where they are, but I don't think bulk is the reason. This is the Planning Commission Staff Report. It's not very big. I don't know why it wasn't included for the public to see. And if you saw that, then you would see and be confused about, but it was explained by the director here that the Planning Commission actually approved a number of other things or recommended you approve. Parcel map, which is similar to what you're seeing up there, coastal development permit, and changes to Title 20. and changes to Title 20. You are not being asked to do those things tonight, as he explained. And then the final comment I wanted to make is not been mentioned, although it was mentioned to the Planning Commission, that there is attached here a letter from the Coastal Commission staff who is not really supportive of approving this land use change when it comes to you. They're bemoaning the loss of visitor-serving property. And I would point out that actually, a little confusing because this currently is neighborhood serving property rather than visitor-serving. But despite that confusion on their part, I do think there is legitimate reason to bemoan the loss of any serving property because we're in the midst of adding many new people to Newport Beach. The SCAG planning area is in the midst of adding 1.3 million new homes. And taking away any of the commercial uses that support those homes seems rather counterintuitive. So those are my comments and I thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Wonderful. We can bring it back up here. Any other council comments? Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yeah. I'd actually looked up to see what the links were also. One of them was 100 pages, but the other one was 25. So it probably makes sense. If it's 25 pages, we can probably put it into the packet. 100 pages makes sense to do it for bulk. Aaron, the references to the legal descriptions, I...
So we typically get those from the department. So we'll double check it to make sure it's right. If it's wrong, we'll replace it.
All right. I'll move staff recommendation.
Wonderful. On the second.
That's it.
Prior to voting, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2023-3, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving an amendment to Title 20 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to change the zoning district from commercial neighborhood to two-unit residential and amends setback map S2B to remove front setback from the property located at 3014 Balboa Boulevard. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Wonderful. Let's move on to current business. Item 15 is the sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park, Phase Eight. We have a staff, hold on a minute, staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Blom, members of the city council. I am Melissa Hartson, your library services director. At its January meeting, the City Arts Commission approved 10 sculptures along with four alternates for Phase Eight in the Civic Center sculpture exhibition. These were voted on by the residents of Newport Beach. Tonight, you'll hear from Richard Stein, president and CEO of Arts Orange County and the project manager for the sculpture exhibition, along with the team member Nicholas Thirkettle, who is a program coordinator for Arts Orange County. They will present the selections and their locations in the park along with the alternates. And with that, I will turn it over to Nick and Nicholas and Rick.
Thank you so much, Melissa. Happy Valentine's Day and good evening to you, Mayor Blom and members of the council, city staff. It's a pleasure to be here again to present these latest works for the wonderful sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park. And as you may know, we are the officially designated local arts agency of the county of Orange by the Board of Supervisors. We're an independent nonprofit. We're not part of county government, but we work closely with them and we work closely, we've worked closely with the city of Newport Beach for many years and with many of your fellow cities throughout Orange County. And this is really the project that I think is closest to our hearts here on Valentine's Day. It is a Valentine to the people of Newport Beach who have really embraced it since its inception and who have engaged in the process of helping to select the coming year's exhibition. And so again, in recognition of this being Valentine's Day, I'm going to keep my comments short. Most of it is in the staff report, all of the details of the voting process, how many submissions, et cetera. So we're going to go right ahead here. And the very, I'm going to ask my colleague Nicholas Thirkettle actually to describe the works, but the first image that you see will be an image showing where the work will be placed within the park. And then we have a map at the end of the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Nicholas Thirkettle. I am the program coordinator for Arts Orange County. And the descriptions I'm going to read to you are a draft text for all of the pamphlets and marketing material for these sculptures on the presumption that they are all installed and then presented to the public. We will also run these by the artists in question to make sure we have appropriately captured their intent and thematic ideas of their work. So we'll begin with Tulip the Rockfish. Rockfishes get their name from their habit of hiding among rocks at the bottom of the ocean, but tulip rendered in vivid color by Peter Hazel seems safe and content here in the open air of the park. Plamen Yordynov uses mirror polished stainless steel to create a visual paradox, evoking the shape of an unending Mobius strip but assembled from spheres which have no top or bottom. Maybe infinity is what you make of it. The diverse flora and fauna of the Civic Center Park have a new visitor, a grazing buffalo named Ephraim, assembled by James Burns in steel and wood with an eclectic cubist flair. Negative space never saw a better match than Zen Connect's evocation of a full tall set of sails against our splendid Pacific Ocean view. Bold in color and shape, Matt Cartwright's kissing bench is more than an icebreaker. It's a loud declaration that it's always a good time for a gesture of love. You don't imagine cut and welded steel achieving such curvaceous grace, but that's what Jackie Brayton has achieved in The Goddess Soul, creating a figure which is both fiery and When was the last time you imagined you were flying? The wild and whimsical Newport glider created by Ilya Idelchik is here on a mission to spread the spirit of joyful play in the outdoors. From a sturdy base, the tubes of Catherine Daly's Confluence Number 102 ascend in parallel waves, lifting spirits and harnessing the sunlight in different ways throughout the Colorado artist Stephen Landis once created a mighty duck for Anaheim's Honda Center. Now he adds again to the iconography of Orange County with his eye-catching figure of pop art whimsy called Got Juice. The word in Coet means not yet formed, rudimentary, an appropriate description of this work from Luke Achterberg that surges with raw energy. What do you think it will become? I don't have descriptions for these alternates, but we will write one if they are moved into the park.
Thank you, Nick. So yes, we always have alternates in case there are things that occur. And you may recall that Got Juice was a selection last year. And en route to Newport Beach, it was in a truck accident and was badly damaged. So it was resubmitted again for this year, but it was substituted by one of the alternates last year. So this does occasionally happen. And in fact, another thing happened this year with one of the selections causing in Coet to be an alternate, and that was the Be Kind, which was very highly ranked by the public. Actually, another exhibition laid claim to it before we had a chance to. And so the artist, of course, we wish him well, but it's our loss for this year and perhaps he'll submit it again next year. And then this gives you a sense of how the works are distributed throughout the park. And I'd like to thank the city staff, Melissa and her team. We had two outside judges. We had Mateo Tanat, who is professor of sculpture at Cal State Fullerton. And we had Lisa M. Berman, who owns Sculpture to Wear, as well as serves as curator of the Muckenthaler Cultural Center, who joined with all of the members of the Arts Commission. The Arts Commissioners had a lot of work to put into this, along with the judging panel. There were robust discussions and the selections, everybody agreed, were the best that we've seen in a long time. This was a really robust group of submissions this year, a lot of variety, and we think that the public will really enjoy it. So we're happy, this work will be relocated from its current location to put to this location seen here from where Got Juice is, which was our original plan for that particular work. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you again.
Wonderful. Thank you. We'll bring it back up here to the dais. Councilmember Grant?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I would say that I hold this project very dear. I was the chair of the Arts Commission when this project was conceived at the request of the then city council when they were envisioning what was going to happen at City Hall here and having the park. And I'm very proud to be part of a community that supports this kind of art. It's only grown better and better over the years. And I did work with you, Rick, and Arts Orange County and other stakeholders in the community. And you have seen it through to a fruition that is really magnificent and a wonderful, valuable piece of our community. I also would like to thank all the Arts Commissioners that have come since then. That was about maybe 12 years ago, maybe a little less. There's been a lot of Arts Commissioners that have worked on this, as well as the Arts Foundation, which is a very important support group for the Arts Commission and for the city here. So thank you to all of those members. I think it's really valuable that we now have so much community input into what sculptures go into the collection. That wasn't necessarily something that was on the original sculpture, but it seems to have grown. And that's really wonderful to see the community vote. And it really shows through in the art that's picked. So much of it is representative of what we here hold dear in Newport Beach. It's not just about dolphins and that kind of thing. Having the buffalo and the sails and the orange and just things like that just invoke so much pride, I think, in our community and what we stand for and what we value. And it's really nice to see it represented in our Civic Center. And that's the beauty of actually where we're sitting right now is we didn't have a Civic Center of this caliber in the past. And the park and the sculpture really completes that loop. So thank you so much for all the hard work.
Thank you, Councilmembers Stapleton.
I just wanted to ditto those comments. Thank you to the entire team, to the Arts Commission, to the foundation. I have the pleasure of serving on the Pacific Arts Foundation, so I understand the importance and the role art plays in a community, especially in a city like Newport Beach. So terrific effort and I love to see this.
Wonderful. Seeing other comments up here. Let's go up for public comments on this item. Thank you so much for your presentation. Any public comments on this piece? Wonderful. Let's bring it up here. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Wonderful. I have a motion by Councilmember Grant and a second by Councilmember Stapleton. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Wonderful. Let's move on to item number 16 is resolution number 2023-13, resolution of intention to reimburse project costs from the proceeds of the issuance of bonds for Assessment District Number 120-2, West Newport Heights, and Assessment District Number 124, Balboa Island, Phase Zero, at a future date in a word of contract number 7977-2. I do have a conflict regarding this item based on my real property interests and the property at 22 Foremereine Avenue. I'll be recusing myself.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Ms. O'Neill, and council members. With me tonight is Mike Senicori, the Assistant City Engineer, as well as the project manager for this project. So before you tonight is the Assessment District 120-2 and Assessment District 124, Phase Zero. And where's the... And in your package tonight, the staff recommendations are listed here. Main items, reimbursement, reimbursement resolution for both Assessment Districts and an award to the contractor for this phase of the work for Balboa Island and the complete project on Santa Ana Avenue, Cliff Drive, and establishment of a 5% contingency for this project. So the District 120 is up in the Santa Ana Avenue area and Cliff Drive off of Old Newport, shown here. It's approximately, it's 44 parcels included in this project. This was approved, the ultimate configuration that we're working with today was approved by the residents and council on January 11th in 2022. And at the time, the total project cost was $2.6 million, of which 1.6 million was estimated for underground construction and with a 15% contingency. The bids received, that we received for this portion of the project was approximately $2 million, which is about 22% above the estimate. The recommendation from staff is to proceed, along with AD 124, with a 5% contingency, have the bond sales in the summer of this year. And we've already identified potential cost savings with this project, both in construction and some of the utility company invoicing. The second portion of this contract would be for AD 124, Phase Zero. So in this exhibit, there's the red area, which is Phase Zero. Phase One is in green and Phase Two is in the blue. On the left side of the page is the completed AD 113, which is the completion of the undergrounding on the island. This, let's see. The overall Assessment District 124 was approved by the property owners and council in July of '21. The total project cost, a little over $32 million, of which $20 million was for underground construction with a 17% contingency, 17 and a half percent contingency in addition. Due to the size, we have always planned to do this project in multiple phases. And at this point, we're looking at three phases. And Phase Zero, with the bid, it came in around $3.1 million, which is about 19% above the, or sorry, came in at two points. No, it came in at 3.1, which is about 19% above the 2.6 that we had assumed. So we projected out to the other phases and this sort of lays that out. We projected out those items in the construction budget. And with that projection, we're at about 24.9 million dollars. We have found multiple areas, mainly the contingency we can cut for each phase. And that takes, that'll handle most of that increase. This shows the proposed construction dates also for each phase. So the recommendation is to proceed with this phase with a smaller contingency, bond sale again in the summer. We've already looked at the plans that have been prepared by the utilities. And we have found many locations of savings, approximately half a million dollars in the overall project. We anticipate approximately one and a half million dollars in savings related to the investment income earned on bond proceeds. And our finance director, Jason Alimon, is here and he can describe some of that information if you'd like. And then, you know, worst case, if we get the same kind of inflation, additional inflation that we've been seeing, there could be a need for a supplemental vote after the Phase Two bid, which would be in the fall of 2024. So that would be the conclusion. And if you have any questions, we're here for...
Yeah, Mr. Avery.
Thank you. So District 120, is that probably one of our smallest districts ever?
Absolutely. Yep.
Is this the smallest?
Yeah.
And then, how to, and then everything within the boundary, those are all some, some commercial property, everybody's being assessed?
That's right.
And obviously, there's some economy of scale with tying it in with the other district, right?
That's absolutely right.
That's how it's being?
Yep.
That's really good. These people are very impacted by these overground utilities views and safety, and it's, yeah, it's great. It's really, I think, good work to take care of this with the larger district. I think they're very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wagon?
Yeah, my question or concern doesn't come much more on the financial side as it does on the impact side to Balboa Island, but on page 163, it says, "Contractor will have multiple crews work on Balboa Island so that work can be completed before Memorial Day in the busy summer season on the island." It does on the map show on 166, a little section there on Marine that, you know, is the, is the bridge, right? Like, that's the most impactful to the entire island, so I just want to make sure that, one, that line in the staff report is adhered to, but maybe that can be something that can be done, you know, as soon as possible. I don't know if that's, the contractor is aware of it, but, you know, there's a lot of businesses, there's a lot of residents, there's a lot of tourists, there's a lot of everything that comes on that choke point, and you see it during major holiday seasons, the boat parade, during summer months, pretty much every day, that that part of the island is the most impacted. So, I hope that the timing is one so that it's taken care of, and the residents mostly aren't impacted, but as far as the businesses and tourists as well. And then, my other small little plug would be also for Ruby, especially as you get close to the summer, that's a real popular destination for a lot of the youth, especially families. They go there and utilize that area because of the dock that's out there you can swim out to, or the little deck. Drawing a blank what it's called, but the kids play on that, swim out to that, and it's a, it's a really cool asset for locals and tourists alike, but that stretch of north bayfront is impacted by there. So, hopefully, when that is looked at, they'll keep those considerations in mind.
Absolutely.
Great. Seeing no further speakers, I will say, I, I have, we've talked about this, but I have concerns on the financial side, but we, there's been a lot of work done to get to where we are right now, and I think we're in a much better spot. So, I'm prepared to move forward. Seeing no further discussion, let's go to public comment.
Hi, I'm Wayne Ray. I live in the Heights, and it's been a long trip to get to this point, and we in the Heights really appreciate your guys' support of this thing. Probably in the future, we're going to come back to you, trying to get some improvements to the streets around a restaurant. As I imagine you guys know, the turnoff from PCH onto Old Newport brings with it its share of traffic accidents, and coming up Santa Anna Avenue up into the Heights, it's a very dangerous situation. I don't know if any of you guys have occasion to drive it, but basically, there's parking on one side, and on the other side, there's not, but there's two very narrow lanes. And on any given day, you'll see people with two or three dogs and girls pushing their baby up the street, and here come cars whizzing both ways. And we're all hopeful that when we get this thing undergrounded, there'll be actually a spot on the curb mostly for people to walk up, and I think that'll be a really positive thing. So, thanks very much, you guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Members of the council, my name is Lee Pearl with Balboa Island, and of course, I have to speak on this. There's a thousand properties impacted here. I think it's probably one of the biggest, it is the biggest one that the city's done. And I have a couple, Sue's waiting for me, and I told her the meeting would be over at 6:30, so I'm going to make it really brief, but I have to make a couple of comments. The project that you're improving, that you're approving tonight for the island, it actually gets the construction started about a year ahead of time. We hadn't planned on really starting the construction. The, the project, the Phase Zero was developed kind of in a collaboration with the staff and the project proponents, and it kind of, I think, is a save the project alternative. It's really, has a lot of benefits that we didn't really go into. I wanted to thank Dave Webb and Mike Senicori and the staff, and, you know, Mike loves to build things, so we're lucky to have him because he's a builder of projects, and this one is probably the toughest. It's going to be a really tough project, but we appreciate it. And then, finally, I want to recognize the council and the, and the past council, because this process that you have has allowed for at least five assessment districts to happen that probably wouldn't have happened if you had Edison building them. Our project wouldn't happen if we had Edison building them. When the council decided that the staff would take the lead on the construction, it created a model project, and other cities should really look at this, and hopefully, the media's still here, because it's a great example of how to bring up these kind of projects forward. And then, finally, I just wanted to say thank you to the council for letting us create a legacy project for the future visitors and residents of Balboa Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, staff. My name's Terry Jansen. I'm the president of the Balboa Island Improvement Association. We have come a long ways, baby. It has been a long journey. Back in 2010, I was elected as an officer of the Balboa Island Improvement Association, and very shortly after that, a couple gentlemen, Bill Willis and Jack Northrup, came before us, and they presented this plan that I thought was pretty crazy, and that was to divide up Balboa Island into two districts, one on the west end. And so, we started, and of course, I ended up to be chairperson of that. And we worked on that for five or six years, doing an analysis, surveys, and we decided it was better to do the entire island. Short story, we decided it was better not to do the long, the whole island, and we did just the west end, which I think it passed at the rate of 77%. And then, we started on the balance of the big island, which was 900 and some houses. And Lee and Sir Sue Pearl took over the reins, and they did an incredible job to get a landslide, 66% of the residents that voted for this program. We really appreciate the support of the council, the previous council, staff, Dave, and everybody that helped make this happen, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Sue, you better make sure Lee takes you to Royal Hand later. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay. Mr. Avery?
I'll move.
All right. Second one, Mr. Grant. Let's go ahead and vote.
With Mayor Blom recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
All right.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Wonderful. Seeing none, tonight, we are adjourning in memory of Pat Nagle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patricia Ann Pat Nagle, a longtime Newport Beach resident, passed peacefully in her sleep on January 17th, 2023, at the age of 81. She was born and raised in Skokie, Illinois, to Irish parents, Patrick and Cora Nagle, and had four siblings, Eleanor, Mary, John, and Jim. The California sunshine was too alluring for Pat, and she found her paradise at Bayside Village in Newport Beach. Pat enjoyed work and found her niche at Farmers Insurance, where she worked for over 20 years. Retirement did not slow Pat down, as she was involved in numerous organizations on Balboa Island and was president of her beloved Bayside Village Community HOA. Her laugh was infectious, and everyone she met became a lifelong friend. Pat had expressed her life and enduring commitment to her faith, a profound sense of community, and deep love of her country. We will all miss her smiling face and big heart, and a memorial mass will be held at St. John Vianney on the island on Saturday, March 4th at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. We are adjourned.